I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of liberty and justice for all.
What did I do?
I lost the agenda already. But, oh, there it is. I was gonna say that looked like two seconds. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Who was second, at least means something. All in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Was Peggy on? I don't see.
I don't see.
Yeah, I think we're good.
She told me that she'd be camp- she was camping.
Yeah, I know sometimes she tries.
She may not have reception.
That's no problem. All right, so we'll jump right in informational items, sex health standards and curriculum adoption. Are you gonna talk about this, Deanna, or?
Yep, um, so this isn't here for information item, as an information item. It will come, come back as an adoption item. Our committee, which the information about the committee is listed in the, in the board item. Did a lot of great work. We've been working since beginning of the summer, reviewing all of the standards. Making decisions about what the committee felt was appropriate at which grade, at which grade level. So we've made some adjustments to the standards based on that. And also reviewed a lot of curriculum. Keep in mind that this part of our standards, the sexual health portion is like, depending on the grade level, could be just a couple of days to a week or two weeks of curriculum out of all of our health curriculum. So it's a small portion. The committee had really great conversations about the realities that kids are dealing with, that, you know, the kinds of issues kids have, especially as they get up into middle and high school around sexual health. And then, so in addition to the standards, which I think ended up being one of the later documents, the one with the yellow, you can see the yellow highlights is a place where we've added in a standard that was later or earlier or moved it later into a higher grade level. For instance, the emphasis on the issues around social media and kids using phones to communicate could be, you know, sexual images. It could just be, you know, things around, you know, inappropriate messages. Doesn't start till like middle school and we wanted to push that down because kids have phones earlier, really emphasizing how important it is to be responsible if you have a phone and being responsible when you're texting or messaging or using some sort of app, because that was a need that both parents, community members, everybody on the committee saw that as a need. In addition, we had Connie Peacock came from life options and presented that her aware information. She does presentations from upper elementary through high school. She has been doing presentations already for our high school. Their primary focus is abstinence, but they provide a lot of good information in a way that's kind of hooks kids in and that they're interested in. And so the committee also would like to have Connie come and present in the buildings to all of our students. And you can choose, you don't have to do everything that she's offering. You could choose one day of lessons, two, three, up to like a week in a building. And she would come in and make sure whatever the grade level is, she's taught that to all of the students. So that's the, her aware information is the majority of that is the early part in there. There's information then on each of the curriculums. And again, this is between three and 10 days of instruction, depending on the grade level. I don't know if you have any questions? You had a chance to read it.
Go ahead.
For the information item, is it, what happens after this? Where does it go?
So the actual, a lot of it I provided for information, but the actual curriculum has to come back for adoption. So that would be for the board at the next meeting. The standard should be adopted. So if you want to look at them as a first reading, second reading, I don't know. But the standard should be adopted because then the curriculum would reflect that. I know in regards to some of the standards, we could not find curriculum to actually match the standards. So some of that work is going to be ongoing, especially for some of the younger grades. We couldn't, couldn't find curriculum either that or we're gonna have to design our own lessons because they didn't have them. But, so we would need to adopt the standards in the form they're in, because they've already been adopted by the state, but we've made our adjustments. So I think that would make sense. We haven't done that previously, but I think that would make sense for the board to adopt those standards. And then we would need to also adopt the curriculum.
How soon can we as a board actually get our hands on the textbooks, the actual?
So there, it's, it's not, most of it is in a textbook. It's an online access. We can, I mean, I have access to all of it now. You can come to the office. I could give you login and password. Some of it we have in the district, some of the elementary stuff we have in the district. And the other stuff is primarily online.
Okay, yeah, as long as we can view it before we
Yeah. Yeah, just, just either, you know, send me a message or call me and we'll set, we can get something set up for you or I can give you the, the log on access that we have.
And I don't actually know Connie Peacock, but I did ask around and she was a lot of people spoke very highly of her, so.
Yeah, and the thing that, one of the things we really talked about was so kids hear stuff from their parents, kids hear stuff from their teachers and it's like, yeah, 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 yeah. But this is a different person, an outside speaker. Like sometimes some of those things kids pay a little more attention to, they've heard it from another voice. We know that it takes kids and adults hearing things 10, 15, 20 times before it really sinks in. And usually it's not 10, 15 or 20 times from their parents. But Adrian's here, Allison's here, we have some of our committee members. I've joined us online, Kathy Asparza, Linda Kirk. Several of them and they, if you have questions, Michael Denny and Jody Saven also participated. So they, if you have any questions for them as well.
What, what do you guys think, committee members?
That participated, yeah. Adrian.
Jody.
She's just like, think about what I just watched, sorry. We're just talking about the decisions the committee made as far as the standards and as far as the curriculum.
That you're all pleased with it?
We had a great discussion about it. A well-rounded discussion. And so, yeah.
And so the thing that we talked about as a committee is in so we're, our expectation is to, I mean, the state requires us to teach us standards. We can determine what those lessons look like and to what level. And regardless of that, parents still have the option to opt their kids out if they don't want them.
We have a lot of parents that do that, yeah.
Not currently. No, we have a handful of parents across the like K, K-12, depending like middle school, high school, there's a few, the high school, there's, there's a handful. It's a, it's a very small number.
I have a question. Can parents get, have online access to this instead of just like a certain people committee?
It, we, I can't just, I can't give out the access, but I can give access, people access to it. So there'll be a notice in the paper for people to come and review. Just like any curriculum adoption, I wanted the board to see it first though, before we did that. So that will go out in the paper. We'll put that in the paper this week. So it'll come out next week. But people, there's always open review. There's always a public review time anytime we have a curriculum.
Okay, and for people that don't get the paper, will you send something home to their, with their kids or something?
We sure can, we sure can.
Yeah, because a lot of people don't.
I, that's very true. Yep, very true.
I think that would be a letter, an actual letter home with every student. And then do we have it available in Spanish as well?
So the, for the students, but the actual curriculum, no.
So if you were the Spanish only speaking parent.
We could arrange for one of our staff members to sit with them and help them when they go through it. And you can actually, depending on what the document is, if you're, if you have your internet set for Spanish, you can read, read things online in Spanish, but yet if it's like a PDF of a worksheet or something, that's not gonna translate.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You know, first I think it was, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the committee members that looked through all this. I think you guys did a lot of work and spent a lot of time looking at it. I, I guess a question, Deanna, for you would be, how did we, how was this curriculum brought forward and how is it decided? What the committee would look at?
Okay, so in the, in the, the state provides a list of a pretty big list of curriculum that is supposed to meet the standards. But there's the sexual health part, and then there's also the portion that's consent and bystander training. So as a committee at our first meeting, we discussed, do we want to look at like, because there are some things that are just like a video. Like, oh, you can use this video or you can use this, you know, some really small parts. So they wanted to look at curriculums that were comprehensive and included the bystander and the consent training because it just made more sense than trying to pull pieces and parts together. And so that made the list relatively short. And there were some things, there were some curriculums the committee was not comfortable with at all. So these are the ones that we, that were available. To be honest, there was at least two companies that I couldn't even get to respond to me. So we didn't get to look at their curriculum. I couldn't get them to respond. We couldn't get access to the materials. These are both the, the the flash curriculum is one that's been around for a little while. It's a little bit newer. The Great Body Shop, we've been using in elementary for years. We looked at the flash curriculum for the middle school and we really weren't comfortable with it. It didn't really flow with what was happening in the elementary and the high school. The, the content was, we felt way beyond what we should be sharing with our middle schoolers. And Great Body Shop was much more, we felt student friendly and felt appropriate for our students. So there, there aren't a lot, there's a lot of choices, but there's not a lot of choices that actually meet the standards. So we started with the, with the appropriate, approved list first and went from there.
Couple of things, and I haven't reviewed a hundred percent of all of it yet.
Sure.
I do know right off the bat, the high school curriculum is, it's just a summary of what's gonna be taught, not the actual.
We didn't get you access to the curriculum.
So I would prefer that before the next meeting. Looking through the Great Body Shop, I'm probably about, I don't know, 50% through it, and it doesn't look bad for the middle school. I ha- I, I am having a little problem with the flash curriculum for fourth and fifth. And I would probably recommend that we go back and review that again. There just seems to be some language that just doesn't fit right. At least going through the lesson plans online or the worksheets, I guess is what they were. And in addition to that, kind of going out and trying to look through this and do my own research. I come, came across one that's called Check the Facts. Was that part of?
Um, I don't recall that one being on the list. I don't, I don't know if, I mean, I, I don't have the list right here in front of me, but I, I don't remember that one.
Well, just looking at that one briefly, and I didn't review it thoroughly, but it looked a lot more straightforward and fact-based versus kind of, not to say that the flash isn't all fact, but I think it's, I think they're trying to sneak some stuff in, in my opinion. So I would, I would recommend that we go back and look at the fourth and, and fifth grade and come back with a different.
So I know that according to the publisher of The Great Body Shop, that their, the fourth and fifth used to be like on the list, but then in the new updated list, they weren't on there. According to the publisher, the, the woman that I work with that, that provides the access, she said that's kind of like an OSPI thing, that they haven't, like they've submitted their stuff, but it hasn't been reviewed. We were real, we liked the middle school curriculum. So I, I think that's one that would be nice to leave in consideration as well. If it appears that it could be approved, if it was acceptable, because we've already been using that curriculum. And like I said, the middle school, we felt like that curriculum was more kid-friendly. But I think in some respects, the staff feels a little bit of pressure too about knowing what they're gonna be teaching. And what I've said to them is, right now, you have what we have that's approved, you teach what's approved now. And when we get what we get, it's, when we're done, we're done. It's okay, whether that's now or that's in a few months is fine. So I, I'm certainly happy to look into that. I don't know anything about it. And the committee, like I said, they're a great committee. I enjoy meeting with them, so I'm happy to bring them back together.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Sounds like a plan. Any more questions, comments?
I did think there were some great parts in this about conversations about consent, sexting, cyberbullying, porn and conditioning. Describing your personal role in protecting one's own sexual and reproductive health. I thought that was great. I thought there was some more modern, definitely different than the giant flip chart we had in health class, but I thought that was good information in addition to reproductive health, so.
One thing I might, maybe we could consider, because even with the curriculum, we still have to take the time. We still have to go through, because like for instance, in Great Body Shop, there, the lessons themselves, everybody felt really comfortable with, there was some like extra activities you could choose to do. One is teachers like, I don't have time to do that. But the other thing was, we kind of went, oh, I don't think we do this, we do that. Because we want to define exactly what the lessons are that people are teaching. So, but the standards would maybe the thing that we bring back, because of the standards and where the committee felt things would, you know, should be or shouldn't be. That would help the committee to know when we move forward, if we're moving forward in the right way with curriculum or not.
Maybe I'm not, maybe I didn't understand that.
So the standards themselves, so if you go to the standards document, which is the one that has yellow highlights, it's pay, it's down their ways. I think it's maybe the last thing. So the committee, just the standards, the committee went through and considered every single standard. And whether it was, I felt like it was appropriate to that grade level. Should it be moved up? Should, is it something like we said, like the social media thing that we should move down and have at every grade, even though it wasn't indicated in the standards? And you can see if you look at the standards, like for instance, kindergarten on the first one, which on my online, it's page 32, just in this particular part. It says H A S E 5.5, that first one that's yellow. It, there's a standard in the fifth grade standards that says promote ways to show respect for all people. Well, they felt like that was important at every grade level. So when you see, if you look at the very last number, the five and the five B, if you go through, whoops, this, what screens, if you go through and look at that, you'll see that there are standards, that's how you can tell what grade level they came from is by looking at that. So if you keep going down in first grade, you can see we repeated that fifth grade one over and over and over. Like for instance, on the fourth grade, on growth and development, that standard, understand puberty is a part of the process of growth and development, is actually a third grade standard. But we moved it to fourth grade because that's where we've been teaching that in fourth grade and we felt it was appropriate to leave it there. So the standards though would help to guide as we work through, because we could say, come all, instead of doing a curriculum, because I think there's a lot of correct questions out there. We can still do a curriculum, but what we could do is, is look and adopt the standards. And then the committee could continue to work and it will take a while to find not only the curriculum, but also indicate the lesson. And then you'd have each of the lessons and the standards, with the standards, so you'd know exactly what they would be teaching. We've never done that before, but we could do that.
So just to be clear, this sheet with the highlighted is things that we teach K through 12?
Uh, well, yeah, each grade level has its own standards, but these are the standards that were adopted several years ago by the state. We've made our adjustments to them for, for our district.
Just so, just to make sure I'm clear.
Okay.
If I look at kindergarten, H1 S E 1.0 K, is understand boys and girls have some body parts that are the same and some that are different.
Right, and that isn't new.
Okay, so we teach this in every grade currently? According to this, this document, is that right?
No, not everything in here, but a lot of these things we teach currently. But the, so some of these standards were already in play. They've been here, been in, in the standards for a long time. Some of them are new. Any of the new sexual health standards started in fourth grade. So the sexual health, all of that stuff is new. The self-identity stuff is new. But like growth and development, the healthy relationship, those really aren't new. They might be written a little differently, but they're not new.
Anything else?
Sorry, I'm late. Did you talk about the life options?
Aware, yeah, we did. Feel free to add to that.
I just think it's a great program. I think it's, it seems like the kids responded well with it. I think it's something that we need to utilize it for.
And again, the focus is abstinence, which has always been something that's been taught. But these standards do have a much heavier emphasis on that than we've seen previously and, and aware really supports that.
But also self-love, self-care.
Good relationships, recognizing what's a, a healthy relationship and what isn't.
And Deanna, did you say that they, life options is already used in this school to some degree?
The high school has used the aware presentation as a supplement, basically. I'm not sure for how long, but it hasn't been used anywhere else.
I got a question. How often is this subject, sexual health standards, addressed? I don't remember it being brought up every year and readdressed and re-eat up. Is it now every year or is it something that were four years or?
No, so if you, if you look at the standard, I don't, you probably can't see them by grade level. It depends on the grade level. So physical education and health are part of every grade, every year of kids. There's some, there are standards around physical education and health. So there is some content in every grade, depending on, on what it is. But it could be more around friendships. It could be about healthy relationships. So there's content in every grade. In the elementary, some of those lessons are taught by the counselor. The counselor might come in for one day or two days to a classroom and teach lessons. The human growth and development, like the puberty stuff, fourth grade, the nurse teaches that and that's two days? A two day, two days, they come into every fourth grade and do two days. So it's part of the year. Again, all of the, all of the content here, all of it, with the exception of, we're teaching kids about having healthy relationships and responding appropriately and talking about social media. Those things are like a natural part of school now, so it's not necessarily a lesson that's happening every day. But even at the middle school and the high school, it's like a week to two weeks. It's, it's not the whole year. It's just part of their curriculum. It's a small part.
The other part of the answer to that is, is the state has put some new rules upon us. And when they, and at the same time, we're adopting some new stuff too, which that's the reason for this discussion. We haven't had it, we haven't adopted anything or the rules haven't changed in so long that that's why we haven't talked about it. Yes, sir.
What happens if you don't agree with what the state's pushing on you?
You can opt.
Get you off that out. That's what you're basically doing by doing what you're doing right now.
Right, so right now, parents could opt their kids out of the, like there's fourth grade, human growth and development. Parents could opt their kids out if they choose to. Or middle, like there's already sex ed happening in fourth grade, middle school, fifth grade, high school. It's already happening. The standards have just been, there's been some rewriting and realignment of standards. So there's like in the fourth grade, we've already been teaching about, you know, puberty, middle school, they, you know, those things have already been happening. Then this, but when they rewrote the standards, they did include some new things, like self-identity wasn't in there. And that's in there now. There was not, in the past, a big, a lot of focus on like consent and bystander training. Like they, there was bystander training, but it's really changed to teach kids how to be assertive, you know, an assertive bystander to stop bad things from happening to other people. What consent really is, like, and how to, how to deal with that. Built healthy relationship, a lot of this content is all, has been here for years, years and years.
So like if you choose to opt out and, and this class is like a week or four days or five days, what does the student that opts out, what, what do they do? Just sit and not learn nothing?
So the, the law actually states if a parent opts out, it's a parent's responsibility to provide the, whatever the missing instruction is. Because if the parent doesn't want the school to teach about, for instance, how, how pregnancy occurs, then it's the parent's responsibility to teach that. So we, we, it, it, we have kids, they go to the library, they work another work, they read, you know, we find a place for them. That's, that's not really a big deal, but it all, but the law does say if you're gonna take your child out, that means you're wanting to teach them, so you're going to teach them that content. Say that again.
Are they tested on this, on these classes that they take?
I mean, kids are assessed on any standards that they learn, but that would vary based on the teacher. I mean, it's not like, I mean, I, I guess I don't know how to.
A lot of times there's alternative work that's given in substitute for, for an assessment. And so the teacher will work hand in hand with the parent and they'll come up with an alternative assignment for the student. In some cases, if the parent provides that instruction or says, says that they're going to, oftentimes the kid will use that period or that time as kind of a study hall. If the project doesn't, you know, isn't that enormous? So just depends case by case, different teachers have different styles and different, you know, different things that they do with parents. Really what, you know, the focus of this and part of, part of this discussion is so that we can work with parents to try and educate their kids in a way that they want their children to be educated. So this is a really sensitive issue. And we recognize that it's not, it's not curriculum that we want to shove down somebody's throat. So if, you know, tho- those sensitivities do exist within our communities, are within our community. And so, yeah, just listening to the parent about, if they don't want their kid to learn that, hey, let's pull them out, let's do something different there. And then let's give them a project or some assignment that will call, qualify, so.
And of all the, of everything that we teach, there's, there's parent preview night at every grade level for any of the sexual health. So that parents can come in, hear what the lesson's gonna be to make the, an informed decision. The, the new law does state that a parent, with the new sexual health standards, a parent, in the new law, the parents do not have to preview the information before they opt their child out. They can just choose to opt their child out. There's still the HIV instruction is still in the books. Parents are, there were, the law states that they have to review before they can opt their child out of that. But there's, I mean, it's, Linda Kirk is texting me, she's online. She said in fourth grade, the whole human growth and development, the whole puberty, all of that is one day. It's one lesson, one lesson, one 45-minute lesson. Fifth grade has three lessons that they do with the boys and the girls. So it's, it is a small portion, but Matt said, we understand it's sensitive and some parents want to teach this themselves. And that is perfectly appropriate, appropriate, but we have a lot of kids that don't learn it at home.
My question is, and maybe I'm late to the party, but whose standards are these?
They're Washington State.
Okay, but do we have to accept them as a community? If this community rejects a lot of the, you know, as a nationally, a lot of this, it's a lot of garbage being shoved down the throats of communities are trying to be. And they keep adding, I don't, continue to add more curriculum in sexual health and all this, and they start out even here. Do we have to accept that as a community?
Yeah, so there is some flexibility in how we work with those standards. And so this is part of that discussion and Deanna had talked about that at the very beginning. At the end of the day, there is no police agency that's going to arrest us for not teaching it in one way or the other. And so like we talked about, there are people on both sides of the fence in this discussion that say that some of the curriculum is way too liberal. And then they're conservative, you know, like I, I think that part of this is the idea of like abstinence, very conservative idea and once wasn't even really included. Prosser made the decision back when, that that was going to be part of their curriculum within the district. And so the, the big concept here is local control. The districts have The districts have the, the right and responsibility to adopt curriculum that tries to meet those standards. And really even try and work with those, but this board is the voice of the community. So, you know, if a more conservative approach um needs to be taken. That's where, you know, our board members are looking out for, you know, our con- their constituents and saying, what, what do we wanna do here? Um usually, I think one of the best approaches is kind of middle of the road. So don't get something too extreme and your kids, you know, obviously we wanna comply with. You know, the spirit of these standards and try and get kids what they, what they need to know. Um so yeah, kind of middle of the road approaches usually work best that, but that's, um there's review processes. And time to look through that and, you know, this is an informational item. So this is, this is the time where, you know, we really put the, put the cheaters on or the reading glasses on. And really start to review and ask ourselves, is this appropriate for the age of the student that we're teaching? Um I know that, you know, I, I've heard it before too, that, you know, some of, some of the things around uh gender. Uh sexual orientation um and the age that we're exposing kids. Um a lot of people deem that inappropriate. And so, but that's, like I said, it's a local choice that we get to make around some of these things. So it's important that, I think it's important that we activate and get community stakeholders involved. Um I mean, yeah, it's, it's all of, when we talk about our community, it's all of our children. And it takes a village to raise, to raise our children, so um yeah.
So what Matt said is there isn't, there, there isn't the, you know, standards police, but. We do ha- we are required to do reporting at the end of each year that attests that we have taught the math standards. The science standards, the sexual, I mean, we are, we do attest that we are teaching the standards. So what happens if we say no? I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it's time to find out. From my point of view. Uh I, I plan to, when I get my hands on and actually read through the books and if I think that my seven, eight, nine-year-old grandkids would be appalled. Or then I'm a no. I mean, it's, that's that simple. If it, if it doesn't, I mean, that's my point of view, but only mine.
Do we as a co- community get to vote on any of this? I think going with that with him, um you know.
Tec- technically, I, I, not necessarily a vote, but your voice is a vote.
The, yeah, the, the board votes on your behalf. I mean, it's a representative. Yeah, it's, I, I tell people it's um, it's tough to screw up in the world of district leadership. Because if, if you're making a wrong move, the community packs out meetings, right? I mean, we've all been to them before, that you, you realize, you know, you really recognize that like, alright, there are some sensitivities here. We hit a button, you know, uh what's the right move here? So um yeah, I, I would say uh review it. Obviously involvement is key, key in this discussion, so um we can't make a judgment on something that we haven't really learned about and. You know, studied, so.
We do need to figure out a way though that, that the community can view the same stuff.
Yeah, it's all through the curriculum review process, so we would, people would be able to come and log it. Come and to our office, we'll have devices, kids, they can log in and review. We do have um, cause we don't have paper. We don't have, we have it online. We might have the high school set on, on, on papers.
Is on the site?
Well, I think the.
No, because it's copyrighted, we don't own it.
I think the flash curriculum is online. And this is another problem for me personally, but if you go to the Seattle and King County Health Department, it's actually on there that you can review the flash curriculum. And I think it's the great body shop, you actually have to have a login to look at.
And we have one.
So that would be, you probably have to go into the office and, and sit down and spend some hours. Reading all the, all the books and curriculum, so.
We can't print it, we can't get printed copies.
We can't, we can't distribute copies of it. We would be violating copyright.
If you make the decision that you wanna come in and review it. Um I'll buy, let us know and I'll buy you a cup of coffee. No, really, cause we, no, we really don't have, we really don't have people who wanna get involved. And so I think that's a positive thing. Um and we gotta honor that at some level, so. Um yeah, if, if you wanna take the time out of your day, there's a, there's a free cup of coffee in it for you. Uh or latte or whatever you drink, so.
There, there was a point, a number of years ago where Bruce Matsumur and I were talking about how many people had come in to review. Because it, it's, so, in some way, shape or form, it's all, it's all available to be reviewed by the public. Any, anything, any curriculum that's in the district, whether it's old textbooks or online or whatever. And, and I know, you know, this was a number of years back at the old office, they said nobody had ever.
Very seldom.
I, please come in, take a look, I mean, we could even.
My board members look at it, but.
Well, I, I was gonna say, I, I could even maybe volunteer Saturday to come sit down for a few hours if you guys wanted to come in and. And flip through or, or something, I mean.
I, I think when, the last thing I would say probably is, the committee spent a lot of time and they really are trying to make decisions they think are best for all students. Even with members on the committee who might opt their kids out, they're, they're trying to see like, okay. We know when it comes to sexual health, the kids need this, I might do this with my child, but, but not everybody will. So I, the committee really is trying to do what they think is best and right, and so I just hope that. Appreciate that.
What's the deadline for adoption?
There's no deadline. I mean, this year, I mean, I mean, we would want it this year. We would want it this school year so that we have the decision, you know. I would want us probably to have a decision finalized by the, it, before the end of the year, so we could say, yes, we have. We have done what we need to do and we have, you know, what's appropriate for our students.
Anything else? So Selena's probably gonna throw a fit and beat me. But could I get you to start in the back and say and spell your name real quick for everybody that spoke up? Yep, please.
Thomas Groome, T H O M A S.
Thank you. She will ask me that, I guarantee it. Just say his spell, we'll go down the line. Yep, you're next.
Randy Riplinger. R I T P L I N G E R.
Kathleen Riplinger, R I T P L I N G.
Okay, was there any? Thank you. So if there's nothing else, uh did anybody sign up to address? Don't even need that then. Did anybody online? I, I don't know, was there anybody online that had a note in about addressing the board? Well, there you go. Alright, so that is our information item for the night. There's nobody signed up to speak. So we're gonna move on to consent items. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Hey, all in favor of approving the consent items, please say aye. Alright, so then we have action items revised. First thing on the list are vouchers and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve vouchers and payroll?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Hey, we have first to second, are there questions? I have one. Um and it is the window washing here at PHS.
Thank you.
Ten thousand dollars, I know we got a pile of windows to wash. Is this an annual expense or?
This was a one-time expense, um and that's actually a great question for the board. Cause so when I saw that, I was like, woo, it's before be, and you, you would have to decide how often you would want that. It takes about a week, they have to bring in special equipment. Um it's a pretty hefty bill. I don't know if we had shopped around for it, um but that is a, a pretty large expense. So how often would you like the windows to be washed?
If I remember back, the discussion, putting this place up was, once a year was recommended.
I knew it was an email this summer with the bid from Shane Binningfield Company that did it. But I don't think we ever discussed it in a meeting or if it went out to bid. I know there's a lot of windows.
There's a lot of windows, they said it took about a week, you know, cause I, I followed up on that and like, and should try to find that.
What kind of lift did they use? Just a snorkel lift or? Uh well, is a snorkel and cherry picker the same thing? Well, I mean, big base, big long arm, thirty, forty feet. Hole too that, I don't know.
Just exterior or interior?
Um I do not know that, but I could find that out for you.
At ten thousand a year, we could buy our own.
Might be Mark Bishop.
There we go. And we, or is he?
Okay, so when I went into Brian's office, he had actually gotten two quotes to do tho- the windows. And he went with the cheaper quote, actually, um both companies were out of Tri-Cities. And I, he was gone af- when they actually did the window washing. And they came in and they used several different pieces of, of equipment. To get to the areas that they needed to get to. So I think that's why it was, the price was so high, is all the equipment that they had to use.
And I can uh confirm it was exterior window washing.
And it, it was actually a great company because they were driving that equipment around on the sidewalks. And they actually went behind themselves and pressure washed the sidewalks to get rid of their tire tracks.
That's nice, take pride in my work, it's better than most.
Shane, Shane Binningfield?
Oh, I remember that name. Review windows?
Based on the quote, it looks like our intention was to have it done just right before school started. So if the board would like us to continue to do that, maybe we can go reach out to them again next year around the same timeframe to get them to come in right before school. If we think the best appropriate. Way to handle the situation. I don't know that you have to make a decision today, but I.
We can just get a hundred foot of rope, have Mark tie it around his waist.
Yeah, we, we also, we can see what's out there as far as pricing in Yakima. Um one of the things that we try and do if we can is stay as local as we can to support businesses in our area. Um so Yakima might be an option as well as talking to other districts. And seeing, you know, if they have enough windows that, I, I think that this is such a unique build that um. Yeah, I've had people say it looks almost like a hospital, you guys have so much glass there, so um. Yeah, so I think talking to other districts, seeing if they have the same problem and then seeing what solution they have if it's different.
Fair enough. What number was that? Do you remember offhand? Forty pages beyond that now. Alrighty, so we have a first to second, any further questions on the vouchers or, or payroll? Alrighty, all in favor of approval, please say aye. Alright, out of state travel for the migrant program is next on our. Agenda. What do you got for us, Eric? Sounds like you're headed Domsie.
Uh yeah, so um last year, the migrant department had an after-school program that focused on mathematics. Mainly at the elementary level K through five. It was successful uh to some degrees. But after our WIDA access data came back, which is our measure for. English language development for our bilingual students, one of the biggest issues that we had was students. Were struggling in the area of expressive language, so essentially reading and writing and speaking. And so. Being a math and science teacher by trade, um I kinda took the opportunity to kind of construct with the middle school. Science team, some after-school services. And so what we're doing is we're actually using science as the content, the driver to engage kids, which I haven't blast with. But kind of underneath it all, we're teaching them reading and writing skills within the content. And so part of that, in this trimester, we are using um engineering and design as our focus. And so they have been building all kinds of different things from indestructible phone cases. To indestructible cases that their Chromebooks can fit in, they've been testing them, so on and so forth. But one of the, one of the challenges we have is students don't necessarily have conceptual frameworks to hang all that stuff on. It's, you know, I got great teachers who can provide information, but with no experience in being able to see that in some different points of view, it's hard. So Omsi has some great programs because it's the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry. So it's really um geared to what we're doing. We wanna take the kids over there, spend the day with them. And have them explore and understand some of the concepts that they've been learning about and see what it looks like in the real world and different examples and how to play. With some of those ideas and then at the end, uh fill them up with spaghetti from the old spaghetti factory and then bring them home. So, so they could sleep all the way on the bus coming over.
Sounds like a fun day. It's a heck of a place to go.
Yeah, it's really great. And for those who haven't been there, I mean, I would highly suggest it, it's pretty cool. Uh so right now, we, I did have it maxed out at thirty, but um through parent conferences, we got in contact with some more. Um students and parents and were able to get some additional, so now we're gonna be looking at probably thirty-five students. Uh plus we have roughly five to six parent volunteers in addition to the volunteers or the other staff that we have. We're gonna go to supervise students as well.
Do you take in a school bus?
School bus. School bus.
Alright, any other questions?
I think it's great. In the future, how can you skill us to get more students?
Um we're actually, we have plans for that, but we're starting small in this after-school program, trying to build it and really. Kind of flesh out all of those things that we need to make adjustments for, because this will extend to the elementary and to the high school. Uh that's our future plan. And again, to address the English language development in those um areas. Because that's really the key to closing a lot of the gaps and you can, I mean, our data shows it all over the place. However, um we just wanna do it with something exciting. And then one of our future events that's going to be coming up, and I explained this to Ms. Aubrey earlier, is we're gonna have a literacy night. Uh one of our local authors here in Prosser wrote an astrophysics book, but it's a children's book. And so that in conjunction with library and our department will be providing some really cool stuff in Spanish and English, so. That's, that'll, once that gets solidified, I'll make sure you guys all get a copy and an email and an invitation to that.
Sounds cool.
Yeah, anything else? Alright, thank you so much.
I'm gonna move to approve uh out of state. Alright, all in favor of uh out of state travel for migrant program, please say aye. Alright. Next on our list of to-dos. If my big old sausage thumb could, there we go. Is resolution thirteen twenty-two, it's the motion to rescind resolution zero five dash two two. To reduce operation programs through decoration of an economic emergency. So we do. The resolution first and then the program second, or no, it's all one operational programs. However, this is a roll call, correct? I'm moved to approve resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, rescinding resolution zero five dash two two.
I'm moved to approve resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, rescinding resolution zero five dash two-two.
Alright, all in, well, Alisa? Jeannie? Jason? Alright, this one was thirteen twenty-two. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is second reading of policy sixty-two twelve for the charge cards.
I can't remember. I always get this confused. Second reading is approval?
Yes, second and final.
I did put on the note, if it, if this one is approved, it would actually change the name of the policy as well.
Move to approve policy sixty-two twelve.
Good, we have a motion, we have a second. Alisa?
Further down the list.
Oh, you're right. That's two in a row. Okay, my bad. All in favor, please say aye. Good, cause I'm running out of scribble space on my paper. I'll probably need it. I grabbed that one thinking that was the next one on the list. That's not. Alright, so then we jump into second reading of policy sixty-twenty-two, the minimum fund balance.
Move to approve policy sixty-twenty-two uh fund balance.
All in favor, please say aye. Then we get back to resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. And this is decl- declaring surplus of equipment and supplies. Everybody read through everything?
I have a question. You know, it seems like a lot of this stuff sits out and gets weathered. I mean, it's been sitting out there for all summer for the most part. And it's gonna sit out there till December. So eventually it's gonna rain and or snow or whatever. Why is it that we wait so long before we have a sale, a surplus sale or just get rid of it and donate it? Versus letting it sit out there and get weathered towards unusable?
I hope that, that having a surplus sale in December will show you that we are trying to do things faster. Um, so normally I guess we only do a surplus sale in the spring, but because we have so many items and that is the concern that was brought to me. Um, if we leave this stuff out over the winter, it's, it's not gonna be worth anything. Um, it's just gonna be damaged in other districts or, you know, other people might be able to use this stuff. It's, it's, maybe we don't want it, but somebody else might want it. And so that is why we're pushing. Unfortunately, there's a sixty-day waiting period. And so as soon as the board approves it, we have to post the thirty days to other districts and other state agencies and then another thirty, thirty days for the public. Um, for themselves. So unfortunately, that pushes us all the way to December. However, we're gonna start getting rid of this stuff right away. So as soon as we post it and there's another district that wants it, they can come and get it right away. Uh, no cost. And so anything left after those sixty days, then we can sell it. In December. So the board's just saying as of today or tomorrow, if you approve it, um, we can start disposing of it. We don't have to keep it. Um, and so we'll take up to sixty days for that, that bill. I do hope that we can get more to a regular, you know, if we have something of value or something that is, it has to be outside. We don't have to have a huge list. Um, it makes sense to only have one surplus sale because it's a lot of work. Um, to get it all together, sell it to the public, but it doesn't mean we can't dispose of things without selling them. Um, so I hope to. Help us through that process over the next few years.
I think that's a good question. I know I have, my brothers always go to surplus sale and they went last spring and there'd been computers that had sat out there. I think they bought them like a couple bucks. They're like, no, not.
My next question, um, can any school group use the surplus sale as a fundraiser? Is that allowed?
Fundraiser, no.
Okay, so you couldn't have, okay.
Um, we can use, so the proceeds that we get go back into our general fund. Um, but it's not a donation at that point.
What were you, what were you thinking about?
Well, if we have some of these groups, uh, you know, whether it's a sports team or, you know, an after-school program or some kind of club, if they needed some extra funds and. They could donate their time and energies to. Being present at the sale, cause I think that's probably the hardest part is finding people to manage it, right?
So we have, um, currently, so Lori and Cindy have been the ones running it um out of the district. If they wanna go and sit there and help, um, I think that would be great. And then it could just be the, the, the board. Deciding that any proceeds we make could help go to that sport, cause you are giving back to your general fund. So it's. You know, it, you can choose to do that. It just wouldn't be considered a fundraiser. If I, that's my interpretation. Yeah. We don't make a ton of money on the surplus.
I didn't think we did, but.
I don't think we make anything.
But it, it's very low. It's very low, a low amount. Um, however, we do typically wait until things are more deteriorated.
Well, on the plus side, in the future, you know, once the elementary schools are all done, we'll have a little extra space so this stuff doesn't have to sit outside and end up ruined.
And I don't wanna pay for storage.
So I talked, when we were, started this whole construction process, I spoke to those, spent some time talking to this, you guys remember Tim? The superintendent from College Place? He's in Afrida now. Um, they built a storage facility because of the surplus issue. So they used some of their um bond funds to build um, like a kind of a barn, yeah, a pole barn to store things because. There are, there is some need to store some of those things sometimes and not just surplus everything, but we do not have any place to put it.
You know, if we could get things cleaned out.
We have storage and storage units. You could have vaults and lockers and assign, you know, migrant or.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, if we could get things cleaned out, we could build a storage building. And then put our tractors and our trucks and stuff for maintenance and that, starting in say October, November, all the way till. You know, February, March. That would protect our stuff in the winter. The treasures in the summer.
Maybe down the road. Yeah, we have, um, you know, some places we could do something like that, but there's enough, maybe enough room over there by maintenance.
We don't want it just filled with junk, but old, old PHS will have a number of different classrooms. So depending our, on our plan, there will be a whole bunch of classrooms that we probably can use and occupy that. Unfortunately, and uh Sean can kind of attest to this, that a lot of those technology pieces are broke. And or, you know, obsolete, they're.
Yeah, in fact, we've moved to recycling the bulk of our technology and computers. Uh, computers have to have their hard drives removed, the operating systems removed by the time it's ready for a surplus sale. There, there's nothing to it. But most of our computers, they're recycled. The rest of the technology is obviously printers. Or projectors, but you can't get full scoring more there. Really, uh, people purchase them until like pull the parts out of them.
So it's, it's unique. And then there's all these restrictions about, you know, like, you can't, um. You can't just pitch it right away, right? Like, let's just throw that away. So there, there's a whole process to it and. And it is time consuming, but.
On, on this request, there are no technology items. Um, so it's all furniture and no asset items. So no capitalizing. This was just the stuff that's sitting outside the desk that people seem to think like that. Um, that's why we all, kind of wanted to push it along faster. So anything that wasn't on this approval, um, we will put forward in the spring.
Move to approve resolution number fourteen twenty-two, decline surplus of equipment.
Alright, this time I got it right, cause it's the last one. Alisa? Jeannie? Jason? I'm aye. Alright, so last but not least. I guess there's still a discussion thing on the bottom. Is the gas contract. Fuel contract, excuse me. Mr. Ellis, you wanna talk about this real quick?
Sure, yeah. So we initially bid, it was initially bid by Bliles at, I believe it was twenty-five cents. Um, over market. Uh, we went back, we felt like that was high. We went back out to bid. I believe it's at eleven cents now. Um, we asked many people to bid. In both cases, Bliles was the only bid. Um, so they recognized that their, their price was a little steep too. And so they kinda worked with us and uh. Um, I, you know, we're a valued customer to them and um. They didn't wanna lose our, our business and they've been great to work with. So uh, yeah, we are approving the fuel bid.
Alrighty, there's only one to choose from, so motion to approve the bid? Alright, all in favor of the fuel contract with Bliles? Please say aye. Alright, so then. We have the discussion items revised, which is a Boys and Girls Club lease.
Yeah, so I sent, I sent a kind of a list of considerations that Foster Garvey drafted. Uh, for the district. And so there are two primary considerations when we're looking at this lease. Uh, one of them really, it, it's. The basis of the discussion revolves around our intent to sell that property. And so there are two separate directions. If we intend to sell um, part of the, the CTE building to the Boys and Girls Club at some point. Uh, we'll have to have the land surveyed. And so there's a whole process of notifying the public. And um, we can't just hire a survey company down the road and have them do it for us. Because it's public land and we're intending to sell it. And so um, that's if we intend to sell it. If we're not intending to sell it and we're looking at uh leasing it, the state asks us to. Do a recapture clause. And so if our district grows, we can recapture that building. Now, the considerations there, that if the Boys and Girls Club is putting money into the building and we go to recapture it. Um, if we don't spell out how that process works, we'll likely end up in court. Um, so say that they. Uh, have invested two million dollars into the building. We decide to claw back. And um, that money's in the building, they're, they're vacated, you know, we tell them to vacate. Um, after that investment, uh, it's not gonna go well. So those are the two kinda considerations. Are we gonna sell? Are we? Not gonna sell. And then if we don't, we need to probably discuss uh what that looks like with the Boys and Girls Club. And even if, uh, if we decide to pull back and they've invested money, part of that will probably be reimbursing them. If it's within um a certain timeframe. So the other piece on this uh discussion is around. Who we want to draft it. Um, Sean Mumford is our general counsel. Uh, but we've been working with Foster Garvey. They said that they can actually draft it with us. Um, and Sean would be uh involved in the conversation with us. Uh, I've been talking with Clear Risk, uh Rich McBride and Michael Dunn. Um, as we go through the process. And so they'll be talking, their piece is more around insurance and liability. And um, I've also worked with the city, uh, the city's big piece is a change of, change of residence. Uh, if we're gonna lease it. Uh, so that's kinda where we're at. That's, uh, we need to make some decisions about the direction we wanna go. Initially, when we set out, we were talking about. A twenty-year, a twenty-year lease. But also thinking about selling it at the end. And so um, just trying to spell our intent out at the very beginning. So I guess that's where we'll start the discussion.
What do we need to have? As we, can the contract go both ways? So if we go with the original, we started off with a lease.
Yeah.
And then like an option to buy or.
Yeah, so like the right of first refusal or something like this.
I know that language was in there a little bit, I think. You know, it's hard to know what we're gonna need in twenty-five years, but for twenty years, but I mean.
Yeah, so we were talking about putting that language in there. And if we are, it would probably be beneficial to us to survey the land at the very beginning. So we wouldn't have to survey it after. And so if, if we are talking about giving them the right of first refusal or selling it at some point. Um, we would probably wanna have it surveyed and say, this is the property we're going to be talking about in twenty years from now. Now, if Proser, if Proser grows, we may be put in a position that um. We're not supposed to use that space, the old high school space for instructional purposes. Uh, we can use it for early learning or office, office space, but as far as educating students, we're not. There is a twenty-year timeframe, but the land itself could be needed and that. That land is a campus itself. And so what we could foresee happening perhaps. Is that we need to build a school in the future, right? And we start to move to this idea, it's been discussed in the past, neighborhood schools. Maybe we need another elementary, maybe we need another high school. And so bulldozing whatever and using that. That site for another school building. So.
Jeannie puts.
I like the way it was written up the first time, the twenty-year lease and get them the right to purchase it. They sell it, but. I'm one of these people, hold on to land, they're not making more good.
So the White Church has a one-hundred-year lease with the Boys and Girls Club, is that right, with the school district?
Yeah, we did lease that property to them. The discussion there was that. Um, they would, they would use it and until they, they were talking about not using it. Uh, if they were able to have access to the CTE building.
So that's tied up for the period of that lease, a hundred years.
I think there was language in there, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have that building committed already to the Boys and Girls Club. I support going forward with the lease. If there's going to be a first right of refusal, we need to know what those terms are gonna be. You wouldn't have a first right of refusal, then get twenty years down the road and say, okay, well. We're gonna buy it and uh, however you decide that the price is gonna be. You would want to have that defined. And that's why you would have a purchase and sale agreement. Setting up those terms when you execute the lease. That would be the best practice. So if we don't. Want to sell the building and not have a first right of refusal, you would just do a twenty-year lease. So that's one option. I think Foster Garvey has done a great job. I would stick to Foster Garvey. I wouldn't have Foster Garvey calling our attorney, cause they're gonna charge. Buster Garvey's gonna charge Minky Jackson and Missy Jackson's gonna call it Foster Garvey. I'm sure this costs about five thousand dollars at least so far. Amy's nodding her head. She's right. I would stick with. And they've done a good job. Um, Mr. Sheenow that did it is the guru of public entity law in the state of Washington. I don't know why we would go with anyone else. We should update our address to have the current address of the school district on that lease, the second line and on all things. Um. I think we need to go forward. The Boys and Girls Club is going to make a significant investment in this building. It needs a new roof as it is that the. District didn't have to pay for. So we would get that return, we get the return of the building. Improved and usable, providing services for early learning kids. Um, the use of the gym and managed by the Boys and Girls Club. And Matt, am I? I think maybe you researched this before. When the playfield was initially donated to the school district, it had the provision, it could only be used.
Yeah.
As a, as football field at that time before arc biker. Then as a practice field, but what, did you, somebody researched? Then as a practice field, but what, did you, somebody researched that and said it. That provision no longer.
Before Matt, uh. We went through and looked at all that and they cannot find any evidence that that still exists. Uh, but that was one of those everybody knows it things.
Yeah, the apparent. No, the, it's in the. What I've heard is it's in the deed somewhere.
I think it's in the deed too.
This, yeah. The, yeah, and so um. Yeah, hasn't, it hasn't been used for that purpose. Um. I think that, well, one of the discussions we have with this building was the second gym. And I think that if the community continues to grow. There won't be enough park space and we will need more fields, be it for soccer, be it for football, all sorts of things, so. Um. I, that would be a whole other discussion that we would wanna talk about if we'd ever want to. You know, if it's not in the deed, do we wanna use that space for, for building? Um, if, if we were to build a school there, of course they're gonna need a playground, right, in some grassy, grassy area, so.
When we, so we, Craig and I, this has been several years ago, but pulled the, we have it, it's in the files over in the corner. And it says on there that it cannot be built upon, they, they vacated the street, because the street used to go straight through. And it does, you know, they vacated that street and then um, that it couldn't ever, couldn't ever, never be built upon, now whether that's changed, there was nothing in the file that said that. But it is in the files.
Did that answer your question?
I think we should look at the deed to know for sure.
Okay.
That would.
Um.
I, I would say please move forward with the lease. I think what is written has been good, I would say, we need to make decisions, we wanna have.
But don't sell.
Well, depends what the board wants to do, if we wanna have a straight thirty, twenty-year lease. Do a straight lease, but if there's a right of first refusal. You would have to have a purchase and sale agreement to take it through with that, because otherwise we get twenty years down the road and we have. What's the price, how's that gonna be decided?
Okay. Sell, don't sell.
Don't sell. Lease. So the lease.
Okay. Alright, so like I talked about, there will probably need to be some. Some language in there about if we had to recapture, there's a recapture clause in there.
Yeah.
But they put was good.
Yeah. Yeah, and so um, it could, just potentially could get us into, I think about um. Later on down the road, it, it probably won't be me, but it'll be some other superintendent at the time. And so trying to develop the language enough so that that superintendent doesn't have headaches. Um. So, and if there's ever a conflict between the Boys and Girls Club and Prosser School District. That it is spelled out about there's a process in place. Um, so it doesn't have to be litigated. Okay, we will move forward with that.
Alright, anything else? Alright, so we're on to reports, Deanna.
Yep.
So I have a few things, one is, um, you probably noticed all the cars here today, that's because we are back in person for parent conferences for the first time since we closed down for the pandemic. We're all very excited to do that, I know the principals wanted to do it last spring, but we. Held off based on some conversations with our union partners. So I think everyone was happy to be back in person. Um, Heights is scheduled to be finished, I put that in quotes, um, finished in, in two weeks. Um, of course, there's a handful of items that are lingering that are backordered that they haven't gotten, there's, you know, some. Metalwork missing, there's might be, you know, card reader issues, or that, there's things that there are supposedly backordered and have been backordered for months. Um, so it's, but the school. If you haven't been there for a while, you can tell the difference when you go in, it really is a beautiful school, the design's really pretty, the windows, it looks, it looks cool, it's a mid-century modern design, it looks cool. Um, after I this, I wanna go back to the discussion about the standards and the, for the sexual health. I think what we, what we could do. It, instead of bringing back the standards or any curriculum in the, a future meeting. Uh, we put out, I'll put out information and I, I'm gonna take a little bit of time to try to make it in a way that's easy for people to look at, because I know it's not. Always easy for everyone to navigate things online. Um, but it is really challenged with some of them, because they, I, I've requested PDFs and stuff and they're like, we don't, we don't do that, okay? Because they are trying to protect their proprietary material, so, um, and instead of doing any sort of like. Uh, you know, adoption window, we do, I'll do a standards and curriculum feedback review where we put out the information, people can come in and look at lessons. And I'll also try to. Slim down, like I said, like in the, uh, one of the curriculums, there's a whole bunch of extra stuff, but those are not things that we would be teaching. Um, so, and maybe do that instead, and I'll work on that and. This weekend through next week to put something out to give people time and we'll open up a time where people can come in and review, versus bringing that back to the board right away. Um, and then in the meantime, maybe I can, we can find some of the other information tonight, if there's other curriculums we wanna look at, maybe I can bring them, my committee back together to look at that first. It helps to have them weed through some of the things that we really aren't, don't wanna consider. Um. If the board's okay with that, that's what I'm gonna do.
I think that seems legit, I like this chic, I just don't understand it.
Okay.
Um, I mean.
They're literally the standards type from the standards, it was copied, but I know the numbers and the letters and all of that are a little bit.
You know, I. And maybe another thing, it looks like a lot. That we're teaching at these different grade levels, it might be beneficial if we listed, this is like a.
One day, today, well, like I said, Linda was texting me, um, I try not to look at my phone, but she's texting me, fourth grades, one day, forty-five minute lesson, fifth grades, three lessons.
It might help, well, it would help me, but.
We could provide that information, that's what I'm thinking, if I, if it takes me a little bit of time, I take a little bit of time. To organize in a way that's easier for people to look at, then it might be with licenses and online and this and that, I, I'll work on that, just take a little bit of time.
So she, Deanna was talking about a crosswalk document, is what they call it. And so here are the standards. Here's a curriculum, and then we break it down to the lesson, so if there's a specific concern around a standard, say there's something about consent. And a parent says, I have a concern with that, they can go right over and say. That's the lesson that we're talking about, let me pull that up. And let me read through that lesson and how it's gonna be taught. So um, those are super, super helpful, that you can say, you can just follow it right across and say, alright, so here's. Here's the standard, this is a curriculum set that's used, and then there's a specific lesson for the day one, two, three, four, five.
So that document that you, that you, that you said is helpful, but maybe that document's actually built, that's just the beginning of the document, because. It's actually designed to be bigger and you add columns and then you can put in like your scope, like what's the length of time? What's the curriculum you're gonna use, what's the lesson, and there might be resource or something on there, so that's what that's actually intended for, this is like the beginning of the bigger document. And as I go through and do some of this, I may need to bring my committee back together before I put it out for public review, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So, so just give me a little bit of time, because I've got a couple other things I'm working on too, so.
We got time.
Alright, thank you, Deanna. Amy.
Um, so just two things, the county went to a new financial system, so our reports are delayed. And we did just get the August reports on Friday, so I'll, should be able to give you an update on August, next, at the next board meeting. Um, and then September would be a month behind that, we haven't actually got Septembers yet. Um, but it's just they're going to a new system, so it's, it's just a delay, doesn't mean anything's wrong, um, we're just adjusting to that. And then also, um, I'm looking into the affinity card program, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. So, um, Christopher's actually the one who brought it to my attention, we had a meeting. Um, so what it is, is GISA Credit Union has. Their members can get their debit card printed with like our logo on them, and so dual branding. And then every time they use their debit card at anywhere, we would get five cents back um, on each transaction. So, um, we would have to enter into a contract with them, first right of refusal, there are no other programs, my knowledge right now locally. Uh, with something like this, it doesn't have to be vendors around here, it's literally anyone with a GISA Credit Union. Um, debit card and they're extending that to credit cards as well, um, and so anywhere that they use them, we would get five cents back and there's a minimum, um, minimum return on that as well, so. I was gonna bring it back to the board meeting in a couple weeks, um, but before I kinda put it together, is there any like initial? I guess, uh, concerns or red flags or something, or, because I've heard that maybe we talked about it in the past and maybe we haven't a few years ago. Um.
I'm not aware that we've ever discussed it, in fact, when I saw the flyer. It's kind of a neat deal that they have, you know, you can get a debit or credit card with the Prosser Mustang logo on it. So I think a lot of people would be interested in that.
So literally anybody could?
As long as you bank with GISA, yeah. Yeah, and so, and even alumni. Um, you know, that, that would be of interest to them, and I know that we still have a people, a lot of people within our region, maybe in the trade cities area. That are Prosser Mustangs, right?
Self-serving, but we could promote it too, and.
Absolutely, and, and they encourage that, because the more, there is a minimum that they would guarantee as a donation once a year, um, and then, but there's no cap. So as well, as however many transactions, um, that are generated from those cards, we would get back in a, a once-a-year donation, so the more we market it, the more we could be successful.
Yet another reason to close my valid, count valid credit.
So I, I mean, I'd be happy to bring it back to the board, I'm assuming at some point it will have, it'll come with a resolution, the contract. And, you know, there's other steps down the road, this is a long term, like it would take us almost a year probably to get it fully up and running. Um, and so there's some work behind it, but um. Yeah, I just wanna make sure before I go too far into it. If we're okay to hear more, if the board's okay to hear more.
Sounds good to me, yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll bring back more information, that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Now. Um. I just have a few things. So October is Principal Appreciation Month, so the principals in the. In the audience as well as those online, um, I just wanna say thank you and. Give it all.
Guys, thank you, yeah.
Uh, your, your job's a tough job, um. I've done it before and uh. I remember going home at night, some nights, I'm thinking, what went on today, how, how am I gonna deal with that, so we really appreciate your work. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you. Um. Newsletter, I published the internal newsletter. Uh, the plan is to try and do one of those once a month. Uh, we, we're calling it the Prosser four-one-one, keep people informed. Uh, it was kind of a, a throwback to the days where you dial four-one-one on the, on the telephone, or rotary telephone. Um, so some of our younger teachers might not get that. Uh, strategic plan, I worked with Deanna and Eric Larez on kinda developing a framework for the strategic plan. Uh, we're using uh, the Bryson model. And so um, kinda John Bryson's version of strategic planning. And so we laid it out, our hope is to, to start the planning process and to be done with it uh, by the end of February. And so I sent the board information on that, kind of a skeleton structure. Of that. Uh, just, uh, just yesterday. Um, Ben Franklin, uh, emergency response. Uh, they reached out to us a while back and said, hey, we have some bleeding and tourniquet. Kits, um, would you like some, or how many would you like? And so we got seven of those. Um, and we distributed those to, or Glenn did, distributed those to the building today. And so that was always kind of a discussion about. Um, when we talked about some of these, you know. There are so many of these shootings, uh. Mass shootings on TV. Um, and we're doing the right things, I think, when we start talking about security. But what happens if the first responders can't get into the building, how are we addressing that? Um, so the first I heard about these kits, what, there were schools in Texas doing the, you know, uh, tourniquet kits. To say if the ambulance isn't, isn't able to get here, here's how we're gonna address it. And so um, yeah, thank you to uh, Ben Franklin Emergency Response for uh. Donating those to us. Um. And so then my last piece was. Uh, we do have a couple items hanging out there. Uh, so um, there's a possibility i- if the board is available. Um, that we would call a, another Friday lunch meeting. Um, I know that there was a contract in special education. Um, and there was a, a couple other things that the board need to approve. Um, but we'll, if the board's available Friday at noon. Um, we would look at that, we get the information out to the board ASAP on those items. Um, so you can look and, look at and review them. And then um, call a quick meeting for a couple action items. And that's all I had.
Okay, well. To start with, does anybody think they could make a Friday noon meeting? I know I can.
I won't know until tomorrow at noon, if I can make Friday.
Okay, and I don't know when Peggy's coming home from. From the river, so. Um, I guess tomorrow at noon, we'll give you an answer, we can or not.
What I'll do is I'll get the documents to you ahead of time. And um. If it works, it works, if it doesn't, maybe we can shoot for sometime next week.
Okay.
And so at the very least, you'll have the documents in advance. Um, and then we'll just work at setting a time for a really brief meeting.
Sounds like a plan. Uh, board reports, Alisa, do you have anything?
I don't have a lot. I had a question in the board packet, I saw that our, said art teacher from HM, the middle school was the design. Are we getting a new art teacher, just having subs for the rest of the year?
Uh, we wanna get somebody in there.
Okay.
Subsituation is tough on kids, so I'll move back a couple of kids, we're hoping to, um, move on that earlier than next week.
Oh, good.
I also might have one from WSU free.
I had to call the district office today and I found a phone tree. I think it'd be nice if we had a person answer the phone instead of a phone tree, and Matt, how do, how do you, how do I call your office from the phone tree? Because of the listed extension and yours is not there unless I'm in the dead.
I believe it's two thousand nine.
But is it in the, in the phone tree, how, how does a regular person call you?
If you know the extension, you can just enter it.
Right, but let's say, a family member has a child in school and they wanna leave a message for the superintendent, how would they do that? They have to go through, just tell me that. Is that necessary, you think?
We had a recent discussion and, and it just helps, um, Selena knows his schedule, and if he's in the office or out of the office. Um, you know, so she can kind of be that first person to say, oh, he's here, give me just a minute, or let me take a message, and then, no, she can call someone, or. She's the intermediary, so it just depends, like an emergency situation does help, but if he's in a meeting, then a parent might think, oh, he's ignoring me. Uh, but if they talk to Selena, she might say, he's in a meeting, I can have him call you back in an hour. So it does, it's kind of that catch twenty-two, like sometimes really helpful, other times I know it could be.
Maybe, maybe what it could be, do instead of be Selena say, for the superintendent's office, call two thousand four.
Or.
That might be better.
Or, since this is a public meeting and we're zooming. My, my cell phone's five oh nine, three oh three, oh eight nine two. Um. I've given that out before at other public events that. Uh, people can feel free to call me, five oh nine, three oh three, oh eight nine two. Um, feel free to call me, leave a message, I've even given it out at pack meetings. Um, and said, you know, at the very least, you have a resource to call, if you leave a message in Spanish, I can get it translated. So um, yeah. Uh. Yeah, people are looking to get ahold of me, um, if, if you have my number, give it out, um. The district, I know the district, uh, getting through sometimes to principals' offices. Uh, can be tricky as well. Um, there is, Amy was talking about, there are efficiencies in that. Um, the district has invested in professional development around. Uh, they call it the breakthrough coach, the guy's name is Malachi Pentecost. And so the, the secretary in that model is the filter. And so they really, um, as an executive assistant, create. You know, that work for the executive to say, there's a request here, there's work for you to do. Here, do this work, and so they're able to get those numbers in front, in front of me, so I can call people back. But it's not uncommon for people. Um, once they get my number to call me, in fact, I had, I've had, had a parent today call me. Um, with a concern, so.
No, I think that's great, but I think when you call the district office, you should be able to hear, and superintendent, and maybe if it just goes to voicemail and doesn't go to you. But I think it's the perception of what's happening, you should be able to call the district office. Because I was like, why don't I call Matt? I mean, you should be able to hit a button and get your voicemail, I think it's perception, I think it's important, I think. Um, for you Heights, the middle school and the high school, Uncle Shannon's been a great job with their newsletters and their communication, I'm a little. Too enthusiastic about tomorrow's Throwback Thursday, um. That Mr. Bailey's been doing, I think it's wonderful. And I know we passed a policy in August regarding October being, um. ADA Awareness Month, I know it's also Principal Awareness Month, we celebrated that Hispanic Awareness Month, Middle School did a great celebration on Friday. Are we planning anything to acknowledge ADA Awareness Month?
Yeah, that usually feeds through the leadership classes. Um, it's also bullying. Like bullying awareness prevention month. Um, so. Um, so I mean, everything and attendance awareness month, isn't it? I think it, you know, attendance matters. So there are all, October is just chock full of all these awareness months. Um, the, I'll make sure that the principals or their leadership class are doing something to recognize, um.
But it's actually required. It's a required, it's a required recognition for schools. So the buildings all have to do, they maybe haven't been publishing things on their social media, but it's one of the required observances.
Yeah, so stylistically, that can look different from posters to, uh, announcements within the bulletin. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll follow through and make sure that, um, they are recognizing Americans with disabilities. Um, in their school.
All right, Jeannie.
Yeah, I just had a couple things. I've been catching a lot of volleyball, taught some volleyball games at the middle school. Um, after our meeting last week, I went downstairs and watched volleyball. Um, it wasn't a lot of fun. And I was up at the, uh, thing at the middle school, uh. Hispanic Heritage Month. I mean, it was very well done, lots of fun. We all wanted to get up and dance because there were no invitations thrown out. I could have got up and danced. Absolutely, you should have.
Jason. Um, I don't think I have anything in particular. I did like the four one one newsletter. I thought that was helpful. And maybe I, is that only internal or are we doing like an email?
Yeah, we can do, we can do something internal. Um, we wanted to start. Yeah, external, sorry. Yeah, uh, we can do something external. Um, of course, the audience and how we appeal to the audience, that'll look and feel a little bit different. Um, so yeah, we can, we can get that started too. Some of it may be similar information, some of it may be different. One thing that we haven't done that was present in this, you know, in this newsletter is. We haven't done a great job at, um, really getting people into our new buildings. Uh, Jody did a good job at saying, thank you stakeholders for the, for the new building. Um, with a poster, but having, when we opened new PHS, there was a lot of tours and things like that. And so just getting the community and letting them look at what their money went to. Um, so they really are nice schools and nice projects. Um, so.
Maybe we could do a Saturday thing where we like have everybody meet in one school.
I think Jody's already planning.
We're already planning it. Um. I like to mess up. I have secretaries that are all about that. However, our building is in.
It's close.
It's close. It is, it's super close. Um.
Just like hang some.
It's super cool too. But we're moving people in the next few weeks back to their, um, original room. And so, in fact, Deanna, Dan and I just talked about having a, um, having a walkthrough. We've got our student leadership going and so there's some. Think the worst for those guys to get some tours. So it's coming. I just, I really, um, to be patient with me, I really want to have it. Be done and be beautiful so you can see the full. The full building. It is, it really is a beautiful building. Um, and so if you can just wait with me for like. One more month or six or weeks. You know, like, it's almost there and it really is. Um, lines were being put up in our new classrooms and the floors are being done. And my favorite room, I was just telling Stephanie Fander, she's our life skills teacher. I love our life skills room. It's, it's super cool. I love our art room and, um, our conference room. Those are the three rooms in the entire building, I think.
But the glass in the courtyard is really.
Glass in the courtyards. I mean, you wanna talk about ten thousand? I was telling, like, Michael, I was like, we could make a fortune between the high school and just. Heights alone, because there's so much glass and windows and it's just. I just want everyone to see it's so beautiful, but I want it to be done. Can we wait till it's done?
You're asking a lot.
I know. It is, and I, oh, and we have like giveaways, like we really do have stuff planned. We are ready. The building.
So which is it? Are we ready or are we waiting?
The building is not quite ready.
I'm sure we could hold off.
I think I have one more.
All right, let's.
Um, I was able to, and I don't remember what day it was, Mr. Danny, uh. And Ms. Cole and, and Matt was there with, uh, they did a disciplined meeting. I thought you guys did a great job. Um. Was this Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Um, anyways, I thought you all did a great job. I think you're moving in the right direction. I think it's really engaging the families that were there. Hopefully we can get, you know, more people there, but you, you did a great job. So I appreciate that, what, what you and Ms. Bull are doing at the middle school, so.
Thanks, sir. Well, I don't have anything, um, which concludes the meeting. All we have to talk about is our next meeting. Which is a study session on the nineteenth, right here, seven o'clock. And I believe Jason and I will have a, a safety security meeting at six. Uh, right here, same night. And if there's nothing else.
Meeting adjourned.
Uh, when, which friend, uh.
See, now there's something else.
To, uh, come up, back, you know, let's kids go back.
Next, next summer. So we'll move back next summer. School will be, school will be there next year. Yeah. Yeah.
Heights is done.
Backwards.
Except for a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the review is done.
Yeah, and when we say done, there's still like that five percent of this and that that they're finishing up, but technically reviewed done. I saw that too.
A little hard.
Yeah.
For everybody to see.
Yeah.
We can see Amy where they go.